Hi, hello.
How y'all doing?
I'm alright. How are you?
Good.
That's great.
How y'all watching doing?
How's-
Tell us some comments.
Yeah, DM me. Tell me personally how you're doing.
Personally? I think you're in charge?
Why?
Yeah, you are.
Why is this?
I don't know. This is the same. This is where we are, I guess. I don't know. Do we need to fly somewhere?
No.
Oh yeah, where's Funky? I think we got it, right? We finished this.
There's no Funky in this.
Oh no. No, this is where- this area just looks the same? Yeah. Okay, it's coming back to me now. We've been back- There's been a little bit of a break between the last episode and this one.
Couple days. Yeah. It's fine. Got lives.
Lives. Leaves.
I mean, who am I kidding? No, we don't.
Louvres.
Trying really hard not to swear here. The first five minutes, we can't do that. Cause the algorithm, can't do it.
No.
Oh, I made it, yes.
Very nice.
So I don't- no.
Oh boy.
Shoot.
I got it, I got it.
It's gonna be very hard for me.
Oh geez.
But that's only for the first couple of minutes, so after that, I- it's gonna be a bonanza of just swear words and... Can I still-
Oh lordy.
Tell like-
Oh my lord. Oh, why did I jump? Fine, this is-
Alright. If you can do it, right in the barrel. Whee! Look at me, that's a- I'm dead. I'm fucking dead. Oops! Oh shoot! Oh darn it! Bleep that, me in post.
Bleep that, me in post. Future Matt.
Yeah, future Matt, please.
You got this. Believe in you, I always do.
Oh god, I hate that new algorithm. I don't like that. I don't like that you can't swear. It makes me feel like I'm...
I pressed the wrong button.
Makes me-
I pressed the wrong-
Feel different. It makes me feel like I'm somebody else. It really does. It really does. And it's just the fact that like-
Just don't do it so much.
I do do it a lot.
I do too. I do very, very much.
A lot. Like a lot. It's bad. It's like- In casual conversations with people that I don't necessarily know. You know, and it's just like, wow, you swear a lot. And it's like, oh well, I hope that doesn't change your very first opinion about me. And it's like, yeah, it does. I can tell, they get that glazed over look in their eye, and they're just kinda staring at me like, do I laugh or like, not?
Right.
I love that.
Oh geez. Okay. Yeah, one of my favorite characters in the Cleveland show was their mayor. They always like introduce as casually cur- uh, who casually curses all the time. He does. And I was just like, I love this guy.
Who is that?
Uh, the mayor in the Cleveland show.
Oh, you're gonna have to like, send me a picture of him or something, cause I totally forgot who that was. Just wait till you die.
I wound up liking that show more than I originally thought I was going to.
Yeah, it was pretty good.
It was funny.
Yeah.
It had its moments. Definitely.
Dude. I'm still, I'm still an American Dad fan, like, all the way though. Like, in the later seasons, it got really funny.
Yeah, no, American Dad's always gonna be my number one of those three. Oh my god. Okay, okay, okay. Do not need that bunch of bananas. Oh geez.
You know, what a lovely bunch of bananas you've gotten there. Oh geez, Burz. You did it. Wow.
I just barely missed that beaver.
Wow, let me give you handclaps. There you go. Great job. Great job.
Golf clap.
Go save it.
Golf clap.
Go freaking save it now, please.
Funky. Funky Kong.
Did you see the thing that I did with Palpatine?
I don't know if I did.
In the newer episodes with Palpatine? The Donkey Kong? How I brought you over to the dark side, and every time I'd say, "Do it", he'd come up, and he'd be like, "Do it." Did you see that? You didn't see it, did you? Alright, well. Thanks for watching our content, Daniel, but-
I've been busy.
Yeah, I know, I get it. I don't care, but you'll see it.
I told you about whatever video. I've been very- it's been a very strange, stressful week for me.
Yeah, I got the gist, and apparently that lady did too, so... Daniel's gist. Is this the boss? Can we be done with this, please?
I don't know.
Is this another warehouse level? Wow. God, darn it. You gotta look out for that, man. You can't just barrel through these levels. Oh! Hope that platform doesn't fall. I don't, I don't like this. This is disorienting. I'm old. I don't know things. Oh, please be higher there. That was like a leap of faith. Holy god. Oh, yay! There you go, KO, I'm code. K-O.
You were so close to getting this.
Am I?
I don't know. You're doing well, though.
Okay.
Look at you.
Nice. Oh no, shit! I mean, shoot! You jinxed it. You jinxed it, you're like, you're doing so good! And then death.
Well, you hit the barrel.
Okay. Wait, what time is it? Eight minutes? Can I swear now? I'm just gonna say, po- uh, yeah, get that in post, future Matt.
Oh, fuck.
Get that too. I'll bleep it, even though you didn't say it.
Well now, I'm just mad that I didn't say it.
We'll give it a crisp 10 before we start swearing. We'll give it a crisp 10.
You're gonna have to bleep that, just a second ago, future Matt.
Okay, I gotcha. He'll do it. It's weird.
Oh my god.
Oh no, I don't like that. Oh, it's gonna come back, right?
Oh, you basically have to- Oh lord.
Fuck you! Didn't say it! I didn't say it! Stupid rope! And stupid lights! I wonder if this whole level is a health and safety hazard.
My god.
Okay, careful. Careful. You can, yeah, you can jump on those guys. I can't. Right now. No. Yeah, you got it. Don't listen to me.
Cool.
Oh. Alright, 10 minutes, we're good. Crisp 10. 10 minutes, 17 seconds. Fuck, shit, fuck, shit, fuck, shit!
No. No.
You got it, you got it. It's easy. It's good, man.
Oh.
Of course.
Crap.
Of course, there's three little ankle biters right there. A Donkey Kong was like, "Make love to be ankle biters." Like, "I will make love to you." We still need to look up Donkey Kong Rule 34, dude.
Oh lord, why?
You should look it up, I'm just saying. Maybe when I die, one of these times.
Why are we doing this again?
I mean, Donkey Kongus, Rongus and the Prongus. I don't know. I don't know.
Gorillas have tiny, tiny wings.
They do? I agree with you there. We've confirmed that fact.
We Googled that.
We did Google it.
Very, very nice choice.
Right, but I think in Rule 34, anything goes, though, you know? It's Rule 34. You're gonna get your Rongus Prongus.
Am I?
If you're a Donkey Kongus. Just saying. Just saying. I'm just saying!
I'm just saying. That video is so good.
I wonder like, what amount of meth he did to get to that point? We're gonna go viral. This is gonna be viral. I'm just saying!
Like, does that hot dog go down into his lungs?
I, dude, I don't know. I wanna say like, mid-throat. I can't kill these guys, dog.
Tag me in.
Yeah. I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put a cutaway of that. In here.
Oh my god, yes.
I'm just saying.
Oh my god.
Oh dude, like, I can't kill anything in this. There you go, you can do it. You got it. Big dick energy, come on.
B-D-E. Oh my god.
Yeah, that was PDE right there. No.
It definitely was.
That's, dude, I'm looking up Donkey Kong Rule 34 now. I'm doing it.
No, we gotta do this.
No, you don't even need me for this level.
I mean, it really, alright. I just gotta do it.
Donkey Kong Rule 34.
You can't kill some of these.
Yes, you can. Yes, you can. Wow! Whoa! Whoa!
I think I've seen a little bit before.
Holy jeepers! Sweet Christmas, that is one huge dick! Oh, is that, oh wow, is that Daisy? Oh, I'm just gonna leave it up to the viewer's imagination here, but... Alright, oh, is that me? Is that me?
Yeah, you're distracting me over there.
Well, I can't fucking kill these guys, dude!
Yeah, you can.
Oh, well, they killed me, oh, wow, that was it?
Last one.
Cool. Alright, yeah, there's my Nintendo banana. Oh, I like this one personally. I'm gonna s- I'm gonna send you this. I'm gonna send you this, Daniel, and it's gonna be hilarity. I actually kinda wanna draw this.
Oh boy, what am I about to see?
Well, look at it. Look at it, you sexy man, you. Oh man, he's getting jiggy with it. It's the millennium.
Thick.
That's Big Daddy Thickums right there.
Thick. Alright, now start the next level.
Oh shit, alright. Oh, whoa, 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 wait. Weren't we in chimp caves before? I'm pretty sure we were in chimp caves before. It's whatever, I'll fucking edit it.
We're like farther into the caves now.
This is the first level.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh.
That whole last stage was us getting to the caves, and now we're in the caves.
No, dude, I specifically remember this part.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I think we were a level in. It's fine. I can edit it. I don't think I've put that video up yet. So we're fine.
Okay.
Yeah, you're good.
What? I'm confused.
I haven't put that video up yet of where we played this level in the chimp cavern, because we've been in the chimp cavern before. So I can just, once I re-record this, I can just put what we've just re-recorded right here before. Comprende?
I do.
Yay!
Wait, is this going in the show, or are we cutting this?
This is going in. This whole, the whole effing thing is going in.
I'm very confused right now as to what's happening.
No, it's fine. Just, you know what? Look at the Donkey Kong. Look at that long dong-kong.
Thick.
Big Daddy, Big Daddy Thickums is what we call him. Yeah. Yeah, I remember this.
Yeah, wow.
Yep.
You're doing real good.
Stop saying that shit, you're gonna fucking kill me, dude.
Sorry.
No!
Oh my god.
Oh yeah. Oh, Tim Armstrong. Tim Armstrong. I am Tim Armstrong. Oh yeah! Mr. Senor Tim, Senor Tim, say something! Oh yeah! Oh fuck!
Oh my god.
Oh shit! Fucking Tim Armstrong, you fucker!
Are you sure we, cause we, if we were in this, these ca-
I have the footage. I have confirmation that we are in the caves.
What do I do?
Go, hit the button. Hit the go button. Senor Tim, Senor Dos, suspend point, suspend point! You gotta do it, we're on zero life right now.
Oh.
Do it.
It's okay.
No, it's, dude! No, stop, we go back! We're gonna have to go back!
We'll get more lives, it's fine.
Dude, we have to go back a le- ah, you son of a, you fucking guy. I'm so fucking sick of Donkey Kong, to be honest with you. I'm so sick of Donkey Kong. Like, I love this game, but I can't. I just cannot right now with this. I just cannot.
Here's the other thing.
Fucking beaver.
If I had, if I had a suspend point there, you would've had to play through that.
Do it over and over and over again? That's fine, let's go, Big Daddy Thickums. Big Daddy Thick Dick! Let's go!
Lordy.
There's Old Daddy Thickums.
He owed.
See, now we gotta go back, now we gotta play the boss. Yeah. This fucking shit, dude.
Okay, this boss really isn't hard, though.
Yeah, you beat the boss and then you make a suspend point. Do it. Do it. Do it. I like modified his voice and shit when we did it too, so it's like super loud and blown out. And there's a close-up. And the colors distorted. I can't believe you didn't see it. It's fine.
It's been a very strange week for me, I told you that. None of them have spoken to me still.
Oh yeah. Alright, well. You got it. You can do this. Easy. Easy. Now it's gonna be the Armadildos. Boops. Boopsy. Just keep jumping, keep jumping, boom, and then that's it. Look at that.
Banana.
Big ol' banana for a big ol' boy.
I love how that took us just one try this time.
Yeah, maybe I just, maybe I just might start it right there. Oh wow. Oh whoa, this is like Cranky Kong and Donkey Kong?
Oh no.
Whoa dude. Whoa dude, what am I looking at?
Don't you dare bring that into my house.
Not even on my computer.
There you go.
Yeah. Suspend it. Before you get to the platform, suspend it.
I already did.
Oh, I was looking up Donkey Kong porn.
Yeah, you were.
Yep, sorry.
I saw. I seen it.
Fuel is just loo- looof backwards. Nooo. Did you-
Oh my god.
Dude, at least tell me you saw the walking on sunshine thing.
Yes.
Did you see that?
Oh my god! I cry laughed at that. I legitimately did.
Really? Uh, yeah, the part at the end too, like, when I edited our voices was great.
Yeah.
I'll just, I just follow you to hell. There we go.
I know. Well, it's your turn.
Fucking-
Are you serious? Are you serious right now?
Yeah, I guess. Yeah, I guess. Alright, that cartwheel. It's that cartwheel, man.
I know.
I love how they put that in there.
Alright, I get a roll, you get a cartwheel. Oh lord.
You gotta, you gotta do it again right here, so...
Oh, okay, it's, I told you now.
The bees.
I don't know what just happened right there, but I'm glad you didn't fall.
You fucking died. You got hit by a bee, dude.
Hit by a bee?
Yeah. No, 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 no!
Oh, we're done.
No. Son of a fucking bitch. Go, go to the suspend point. It's getting hot in here.
Well, alright then. Miss mine. Tell you what.
I think, uh, it would've been way better if we just went to like, the last world from here.
Well. I would love if this last world, if this world was incredibly short.
Yeah, you know it won't. But it's wishful thinking. It's that kinda wishful thinking that gets me through a let's play. Ha ha! Oh yeah, I do know. Cause I do it every fuck, all the time. I do it all the time. Where am I going? Am I getting the O now?
Get back on. There's, there's fuel on the left.
I see that, yeah, I got it. I can do it.
Yeah, yeah.
I can do this shit. I'm not a filthy animal, I can, I can do it.
I'm a monkey.
Oh, I'm a monkey, dude.
But, did you see that? The episode of South Park where they had Richard Dawkins on?
What? No?
Garrison was still a woman, and was like, hella trying to get at Richard Dawkins, and then they started banging.
Wait, yeah, I think so.
Garrison's just like, fuck me like a monkey! I'm a monkey! So funny!
So like, can I, can I give you a hypothetical?
Sure.
How much money would it take you to fuck a monkey?
Oh, I don't, I don't know if that's, uh, no.
No amount of money?
I don't think I would do that.
Okay. Man of morals.
Monkey.
Right here.
It's a monkey.
What if it was like a really sexy monkey?
A sexy monkey? Wow.
I don't know, man. Just trying to liven things up, dude.
Trying to shake the barrel.
I'm just trying to shake, shake that barrel, man.
Shake that barrel.
Yeah.
Barrel full of monkeys. If you had to eat the monkey brain soup in Indiana Jones, like, which, how much money would that take?
Zero, zero dollars. I would do that for free.
Yeah?
Yeah. Fuck! 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 Yeah, I would do that for free.
You'd do that for free?
Mm-hmm. It looks good, man. Wait, what hap- did you just die?
Yeah. I fell through the platform.
Cool. How much money would it take you? Like, just like, just like a little bite? Or like the whole thing? You had to finish the whole thing?
Yeah, finish the whole thing.
Okay, maybe like five grand?
Clean the fucking, yeah, clean the inside of that skull.
Okay, so I forgot, was it like al dente?
I don't remember. I just remember them opening it up, and there's like a brain inside.
So they don't even cook it, like, at all?
I don't remember. I think they did. You totally, oh.
I keep missing that one. I keep doing the same mistake over and over and over again. Yeah, well, that's the suspend point. Give it.
Okay.
I think it was al dente. I think you had to eat it, yeah, straight raw.
To do this.
Maybe, it depends, uh... Yeah, like five grand, five Gs, I'd do it. Then again, I don't condone that kind of food, ever. Or that kind of behavior on an animal, don't get me wrong, but I probably, you know, probably eat some monkey brains if I was in the Temple of Doom.
You know?
Do you know, when in Rome? When in Rome?
If I had to.
When in Doom?
To, to, to blend in?
Yeah, do as the Doomies.
Oh wow.
I just thought it was like, even better when that guy picked the wrong cup on the Holy Grail. His face melted.
Yeah, it was great.
I always thought it was like, weirdly like, that's something I would see in a strawberry milkshake kinda thing. Well, because his face melts off like white and red.
That's true.
And for a brief second, it's like a dull color of red. And it reminds me of a strawberry milkshake, so every time I would watch that, I'd be like, oh yeah, strawberry milkman. Every time.
Oh, my god, really? That beaver just ruined me.
Yeah. So every, yeah, every time I would watch it, I would remember it by that one part where his like, face was melting, and I'd be like, yeah, strawberry Nazi guy!
Okay, okay.
Yeah, like my young self, you know, that was like, when, how old are you when the Temple of Doom came out? Fuck my ass! Fuck my ass!
Oh my god, you actually got that.
Yeah.
Wow.
I don't know, man.
I didn't even mean to do that Woody Woodpecker little laugh right there either.
Don't start. Just do not start with me right now. Don't do it, dude. It's run its course. Okay? We've had a good thing. We've had a really good thing with that. I'm not doing it. I'm not, I did the laugh today with my friend Lauren, and she thought I was nuts.
Oh, really?
Yeah, she was like, what is that even from? And I was like, no, it's just like a thing me and my friend did.
Fuck.
And it wasn't even- No, 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 like, I did the last part of the laugh with her. I was like, something stupid. We were making fun of some like, city councilman's name where I'm from, like, in Petaluma. There's this guy called Brian Barnacle, and he's running for city council, and I was like, oh, what is he, who's this fucking guy? Is he gonna try and steal the Krabby Patty recipe or some shit? It's just like, cause you know, it's, I don't know, it's a nautical term, so... I just thought, like, fucking Brian Barnacle. Brian Barnacle, vote for me and free Krabby Patties for everyone in Petaluma, yay!
Barnacles.
Right? I can't wait till this video goes viral, and then Brian Barnacle gives me a cease and desist letter. He's like, please, never use my game again, never use my name again in any of your stupid YouTube videos.
Right. I never wanna hear my name.
It's just like, I am in no way ever associated with anything that has to do with SpongeBob, ever. Okay? I am Brian Barnacle, and you will take my name seriously? I am running for an actual seat in the city council of Petaluma. How dare you slander my name?
How dare you?
I'm Brian fucking Barnacle!
Who do you think you are?
I know nothing about Krabby Patty recipes. How dare you, sir?
How dare you insinuate that? That I am a cartoon character?
I do not know Plankton, or Mr. Krabs! Or am I any way associated with SpongeBob or Patrick?
This is ludicrous. It's outlandish.
God, I hope he watches this video. I really hope he does.
I'd love if he like, like, the Hayden Christensen, "It's not fair." Oh my god, are you serious?
It's not fair.
It's not fair.
It's not fair.
It's also your turn.
What do you mean I'm not a Jedi? It's not fair.
Oh god.
I'm Hayden Christensen. I fucking hate Hayden Christensen. I, I'm, I'm not even sorry, dude. Don't like him. He's like awful actor, dude. I feel like I could do the same, I could do a better job than him, as Anakin Skywalker.
Okay.
Oh, 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 my pajamas. Yes.
Oh.
Yes. Yeah!
And pajamas?
Bananas and pajamas, they're fucking your mom!
Oh my god.
Super frame rate dip, girl.
Seriously, don't, 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 oh my god.
I got it, dude!
Oh my god, why would you do that?
Ay yi yi! Minno es bueno, and bees!
My turn.
Yeah, just fucking hold it down. You can do it. There, this is like, almost at the end. You got it.
Oh my god.
Maybe get rid of the tire. I, I don't think you need the tire anymore.
Yeah.
After that.
I don't know, what if we do?
I don't, we should probably ask Brian Barnacle.
No, let's keep it.
What up, Barnes?
Knowing this game, we'd, we'd get to the very end and there'll be like, like the G to spell Kong or something, and we need that tire to get it.
I don't. Alright. Take your word for it.
It's happened already.
Do you know what's happened? Brian Barnacle happened.
Brian Barnacle?
First city council of Petaluma. Fuck. Fuck. Fuck me!
He's already spiting us. He's already spiting us.
Oh, I tried, I tried!
That was a really good idea, man.
Yeah. Are you ready, Brian? I can't hear you! Ay ay, captain! Whoa! Who lives in a pineapple in Petaluma? Brian Barnacle, who's running for city council of Petaluma, Brian Barnacle! You know what, like, knowing him, I'm sure it's not even, he doesn't even pronounce it Barnacle. It's like something weird, like...
Branakle?
Branakle, or something. Or barns- barn seal.
Barn seal?
Barnsel.
Barnsel.
Yeah. Like that, that fucking guy. What do you, what do, what do you do this to me? Why do you do this to me, Daniel?
Like, why'd you do that?
What? I, you can control the first one, you don't...
Oh, I, I don't know why I was facing that.
Yeah, you don't have to, fuck this fucking tire, get out of here.
Alright, fine.
I'm not, not doing it. High five, bee! I love bees, I hate bees!
You should've loved the bananas.
Yeah, alright.
It's a trap.
Alright, suspend point it, let's do it. Forty minutes and one episode, again, or one e- one, whatever, one, what are these things called? Levels? Levels, they're called levels, you fucking dingus. Forty minutes, one level, it's good, this is good YouTube, right here, this is good YouTube. You know what? I'm gonna entitle this one, "Brian Barnacle for City Council of Petaluma."
It happens to lots of street, let's play it.
Please send me a cease and, and desist letter, please.
I was gonna say, he's probably gonna do that.
He's gonna see this and he's gonna be like...
Comes to their attention.
Oh, Brian Barnacle. Mr. Barnacle. I feel like it would be even better if we had the kind of clout to where we could get a cease and desist letter from a city councilman of a town.
Right.
You know, like, we had like, hundreds of thousands of followers and they just like harassed him to a point, send him like hella just SpongeBob memes with his name in it and everything? It was just like, who's this Brian Barnacle guy? And why isn't he from, running for city councilman in Bikini Bottom? Right?
Poor Brian.
Oh yeah, fucking Brian Barnacle. He's, he's a G though. Or I don't even know.
It's just like, think about, like...
Why don't you tell me yourself, Mr. Barnacle? Somebody that's not even, somebody that's not even from your town.
Oh no. Oh, gosh. Oh, why did I jump?
Well... Get rid of the, you don't need the tire no more, man. You missed the N, so, whatever. You can get it. Yep.
Dang it.
Cool. Cool. God, dude.
Focusing so hard on that too, oh my god.
I'm just not even gonna fuck with it. Oh my god!
Oh my god. Okay.
Barnacles.
This is, you know? This is what makes, uh, a game last a long time.
Yeah, being just awful at it, just bad. We are bad at Donkey Kong, man.
It's made to be hard, man.
Dude.
It shouldn't be easy.
It should not be this hard. This is a kid's game.
Exactly. It's how you get value out of this for kids. Playing this forever, trying to beat it. Okay, okay. Oh my god, really?
I'm assuming that's me, since I was... Oh, cool, cool, I'm dead.
Cool.
Is there like a cheat code or something? To where we could like, skip levels?
There's not. There absolutely is not.
This is dumb, I hate this game. Like, I'm, dude, I'm really close. I wanna make this stop, kinda bad.
No, we'll get, we'll get this, I swear.
Dude.
We'll get this. It's gonna feel so good when we get this, just watch, like...
Am I gonna come and start farting? Is it gonna feel that good?
Bro, you might, I don't know.
Alright.
I can't.
I better.
Can't say for certain. I don't know your body.
That's what happens when I'm happy.
That's what happens.
Come on, dude. Oh, there's no N?
I guess cause I got it already?
Yeah, like those barrels are kinda pointless. If you think about it, there's just that set of bananas in the middle of them.
Yeah.
You don't really need them for anything else. There you go.
Yep.
Nice. Just duck.
Oh, boy, I, I've, um... It's fine, it's fine. I didn't get the G, it's fine, I don't wanna go back.
Who cares? Yeah, we're done with, it doesn't matter, doesn't matter.
My hands were a huge sweaty mess. It's okay. We're done. We did it. God. What fresh hell is this?
Oh, you, you want me to, ah, jeez.
I did that by accident, to be honest.
Dub dub, dirty Kong! I'm gonna get all the letters, I'm gonna get a hundred bananas, it's gonna be great.
It's so nice to not be on a conveyor belt level again.
Oh, yeah. Well, whatever, fuck that right now. We don't need you. And you don't need me.
Oh.
You don't need you.
I thought the top one was coming down.
Sh- shamanite shaba baba?
Shaba baba?
What a twist! You got shaba babbed. Midnight shama lama ding dong, dingus. Like, it's like, what a twist, like in The Happening, how all the plants were angry at all the people in all the world, and they made them kill themselves.
What a twist.
What a, what a twister.
What a twister.
You know what was, uh, funny, is that twist, I actually enjoyed Twister with, uh, who was it? Helen Hunt. And, uh...
That movie rules.
Twister, especially the part with the cow, oh, just fly, it's like, just like a horrible CGI rendering of a cow in a twister. Do you remember that?
I do, I do.
Hilarious.
Yeah, that movie's awesome.
And it, it's straight up like moves at the camera. It's like, what is this movie?
You know, impossible things that would never happen, happen?
Yeah.
Like how they, they somehow survive being inside the center of the storm the way they were.
Yeah, yep, yep! Yeah, they're just like in the middle of a twister, just twisting it up. It's just like, what's up, we're doing the twist. And the mashed potato?
Do the twist.
I could mash potato, twist, twist, I could make some bacon, twist, twist, and you fucking died because that's a pit and you can't jump in it.
Those bananas were to guide you to the, guide me to the platform, which I knew was... Oh my god, this game.
Yep.
Game.
This threw a wrench in your operations there, that's what it did, I'll tell you what.
This is the story of a girl who cried a river and drowned the whole world.
Though she looks so sad and so depressed, I absolutely love her when she smiles. She's a fucking dummy, and when she looks so sad, I fuck! Fucking tire! Oh, you, you want us to suspend point this shit, bro? Like, we're at one life.
Oh no.
Yeah, do it, dude. And get me, what are you doing? Come on! Get me to suspend point it, do it! Suspend point. For the love of fucking god. Let's be on, let's be on our game, please. Tonight, this morning.
Oh, what?
I don't know why we have to do them so late at night. Oh shit, alright, bye.
Sick.
Oh. Cool.
Wow.
Yep. That happened. That fucking happened. Suspend point. When I'm jumping in between those spiky tires, makes me wonder like, maybe I should retire from the tires. I don't wanna do this. I've been done since six levels ago. Shit!
Oh no.
No, you're fine, I think we're, we're like, almost done. Yeah, this is it, this is the last.
Oh my god.
Alright, chill. Alright, it's just, it's just like, it's... Like, it goes back and forth, goes back and forth. It would've been good to know things rare wear for that one. Slow that suspend point, do it, fucking do it, fucking...
Great.
Wow, man, you're dead already? Uh, oh, what's up? Heat tits, what are you doing? Come on, baby. Let's do it. I got it. I got, no, alright. Cool, yep.
Big oof. Oh my god.
Wow, even bigger fucking oof right there.
Fuck.
Come on, man. Load it up. Do it! Dude!
You know what? Tag in.
I wanna do this. I'm so over Donkey Kong. Fuck! You know how bad my coordination is?
Oh, lord. Okay, I'll start. Really?
Yeah, man. What are you doing?
I don't know. Nice.
Come on, get out of my way. Give me something. Give me something. Give me something.
Ah.
Ah, I tried.
You're close.
Yep. It's a part that throws me right here. It's...
I really hate these spike tires so much.
No, it's the moving platforms, man. Like, I can deal with the spike tires. That's fine.
It's...
Dude, stop doing that!
I'm not, all I'm pressing is the run button.
That's like the third time you've done that. Fourth.
Wow. I'm getting really tired now, too.
Yeah. It's one in the morning.
No, I mean of this game.
Yeah, man. Yeah, no, I know, I know, I know, yep. Yeah, I've been tired of this game since the ice level. To be honest with you.
We've made, we've made a pretty valiant push forward, though.
Yeah, no, I mean, we're almost there!
We really are.
For the love of Christ, we're almost there!
We're so almost there, dude.
Might as well just finish it. Mama didn't raise no quidoh!
Get the F out of here.
Get the, get the Kong out of here. Oh, Jesus.
I'm back. Should we suspend the last one point?
Yeah. Right there. Boom, baby, do it. Do it!
I hit this level.
Yeah, this level is, this level's ass. Do not like this level. Shit, man! Come on, give me that jump. Didn't do it. Alright, watch out right here for that.
Okay, okay, okay.
So it goes back and forth. You could, yeah, you could kinda just chill in the middle of it on the other side. Perfect, perfect. It's fine, I'll just, I'll hang out. Almost an extra life. Three more. What are you doing? Get me.
I don't have anymore.
Get me. There it is. Come on now. Hey, oh ho. Oh wow, big jump, big daddy! Do 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 do, do do do, yay, we just made it! Created a suspend point. On that one, I think we're gonna have to close out this episode, forty-nine minutes. Bye, everybody, thanks for watching.
Thank y'all for stopping by. Please like and subscribe. We're so close. Finish this journey with, or if you're just joining, thank you for joining.
Thanks for joining in our torture. Goodnight.